Yeah. Hello, we're back. I'd like to make a motion that we reopen the meeting of the board of the planning board. Second, all in favor? Aye. The first item on our agenda tonight is to adopt minutes of the planning board meetings of November 4 and December 2. Given the rush of work during year end, those minutes have not yet been prepared by staff and we will defer that to our next meeting. Item two on the agenda, discuss action for site plan recommendation to Board of Trustees for proposed alterations and additions on property at 75 Main Street. As you know, the board has been having meetings on this for some months. We've had the applicant and the consultants to the applicant giving us lots of information. We, our consultants and attorney have been working on this and the board has obviously been discussing it. I think what we're prepared to do tonight is to consider a resolution on that, on that application. And it's still in, basically in process to get a, one that is complete, absolutely complete. There's just changes we've been talking about in the, in our meeting. But I, if I could ask Darius to address the resolution that we, that we have before us. And perhaps Dwight could go into some of the details of it, too.
Yeah Dwight, you want to take the details of the resolution? Or the issues?
The meeting last month, basically, members of the planning board came to unanimous consent that the design that had been proposed and modified many times in response to Architectural and Historic Review Board members' input, as well as the planning board's members' input and consultants, that the design was a useful and appropriate and positive design. Maybe positive is the best word, though, is for the building addition on the lot on Palisades as it butts the 75 Main. At that point, the focus shifted to what was the best method to move forward with it because there were three basic options. The proposed addition on Palisades Avenue did not comply with zoning. So you could, as it was discussed, and I'm sure you're aware of this, but just to reiterate, you could rezone the property. We looked at two different aspects of that. One was to bring the DB zone down to include this parcel because the parcel's unusual in that it's one parcel that's split between two zones. Or you could go apply for a variance. Or you could use the waiver powers that are granted to, in this case, the Board of Trustees. And in this case, what we're looking at is a resolution that makes a recommendation to the Board of Trustees. This is not a decision-making point. So we have explored the pluses and minuses of those to determine what is the appropriate vehicle. And there's a lot of unanimous agreement on that. There's a unanimous agreement that the project as such is a positive one. But the method to actually enable it to be approved has some split among the board. And then board members can speak for themselves on that. So the general direction of the resolution that we're considering, which has been in many draft forms now and is close to complete, as Darius is saying, would recommend that waivers be granted by the Board of Trustees. And the waivers, the waivers point out the important aspects of the project itself. And note the requirements that must be met for a waiver to be granted. And that those requirements are that they're a superior project that can develop as a result of the grant of the waivers. And that the health and safety of the community is enhanced. So the, looking at this specific project, the first point as to why a waiver would be appropriate for the Board of Trustees to grant was the importance of the restoration and improvement of the Oceana Building at 75 Main. The second characteristic was looking very intensely at what the current appearance of the warehouse building on Palisades is and the back of the 75 Main. And noted that the improvements that are proposed would enhance the visual characteristic from Palisades. Although this new building is tall, and that's been a really big issue that we've looked at, the building addition is tall, the actual visual impact would be enhanced as opposed to negatively hurt by that. We noted that 75 Main, under the village's ordinance, could be redeveloped with apartments without providing any parking. That's what the ordinance allows. So as the building sits in semi-vacant condition, a project could come forward to just build apartments with no parking. And therefore, the conversion of the old warehouse building into the 28 parking spaces that are proposed was viewed as another enhancement, another positive characteristic that would enable a waiver to be considered by the Board of Trustees. There's also some minor improvements to the site in terms of the preservation of existing trees and other streetscape improvements. We would are very positive about, the developer has proposed condominium units and bringing ownership members into the downtown instead of just tenants was viewed as a positive thing and a reason that a waiver could be considered. And the condominium units tie back into the provision of housing, of parking in the old warehouse building because to develop condominium units and not provide adequate parking for them was viewed as an unlikely possible development, therefore, they tie together. I think those are the key. We've looked at the technical reasons under which a waiver could be granted, noting that the vision plan and the LWRP looked for enhanced residential, or sought to have enhanced residential development in the downtown. So the waivers themselves, we consider splitting into two categories. One is height. The building will exceed the height that's allowed in the MDR 2 zone. And there are various calculations, but our latest calculation is 14.5 feet higher than. And then if you add, there's a small recreation building that's proposed to be constructed on top. If you added that on, then it would exceed it by an additional eight or 10 feet. The, there's calculations under which this smaller building on the top can be, not counted as part of the height. The other waivers relate to lot coverage setback. And all of them are based on the existing footprint of the building that's at, at the back of 75 Main on Palisades. These, the proposal, the new building would be built on top of that building which would be converted into two levels of parking. In no case are any, and none of the, that old, the building that's there now, the warehouse building, does not comply with side yard setbacks, front yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks, lot coverage. But building on top of it, without exceeding those things any further than they already exceeded, still requires either a variance or a waiver because as you build up on top of those, as has been interpreted by the building inspector, those, that isn't an additional encroachment, but it has an impact that brings about a requirement for variance or waiver. So the waivers that would be required for that are based solely on the existing footprint of that. We're not trying to exceed those in any manner, but we are acknowledging that the waivers are required nevertheless because the building is going up. A third area was proposed, that the new building on Palisades have a total of 10 units, or nine or 10. And the applicant has requested a waiver to allow nine or 10 when only eight are permitted under, in the MDR 2 zone. And in this case, the members, I believe, have all agreed that that waiver should not be granted, that the applicant must abide by the maximum number of dwelling units permitted in the MDR 2 zone. So then there's a series of conditions that they, if the resolution goes forward, as is, that's the justification for the waivers and the nature of the waivers. And then there's a series of conditions as to the, it still requires, the project must require Architectural and Historic Review Board final approval and all their comments and all their conditions must be incorporated into the building. The project can have 24 total units between the building addition and the existing building, and no more than that. And it must provide 28 parking spaces in each of the 24 units. If it's that many, it may be reduced. There's been discussion that they would get numbers reduced down to 22, 23. Then each one of those units must have a designated parking space. And the retail area must have a couple of spaces set aside for employees that would occupy the retail. The historic restoration of the Oceana Building shall conform to the Secretary of the Interior standards to the greatest extent feasible. And the applicant thereby, at the, at some point in the process, would make application for placing the building on the National Register of Historic Places. I'm trying to hit the high spots quick. We are recommending that if the waivers are granted based on the applicant's submission that this be a condominium development, that that's a condition of the approval, if the Board of Trustees goes on to grant approval, that it must be for a condominium development. The applicant will be required to apply for lead certification and submit a checklist at the time that the building permit application is submitted.
I think that's not a requirement.
Lead's not a requirement.
Yeah.
It's a recommendation.
Recommendation.
I mean, there's a standard by which they can, but informally.
Is that, the normal, other types of aspects in terms of landscaping, storm drainage, requirements, you know, compliance with the county and state regulations. The provision of two affordable housing units pursuant to our ordinance would be required. A payment toward the Recreation Fee Fund would be required, that's $10,000 per unit. And I think those are the key components of what is being discussed. And going back and forth, one last thing I would say about the, the, I think there's a consensus on the planning board that the MDR 2 zone needs to be looked at because there's aspects of it that don't, a lot of the properties in the MDR 2 zone are in non-compliance with setback requirements and other things. So that, there's a need to study that and come back and look at that. And then there's still outstanding discussion as to whether the parcel in question, which is split between two zones, would be at some point before the project goes forward or after being rezoned to DB. So I think, is there anything in addition that I should? That's the summary of what's before the board.
I think that's.
Yeah, procedurally, you would want to take a motion. Second, if there's a second, then to have a discussion and then vote.
Yeah, right. Yes, so I would, I would move the, the motion that has been outlined. We will have a final form, but it'll contain those things and, and the usual boilerplate. I would move that we approve that recommendation of the Board of Trustees regarding the site plan application for the project known as 75 Main Street. And is there a second?
I'm just confused, are we going to make comment about, about, are we voting for the resolution now? And, but then we'll explain our rationale.
I think what you should do is, the motion's been made and seconded, I think you should discuss the issue now.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Talk about your vote and then vote.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah, no, that's fine. Well, I think this is, this could be a very exciting event for the village of Dobbs Ferry. I've lived here for over 52 years and was here when the Oceana was, was operating and have watched over that period of time, with a few exceptions, the building deteriorate to its present state. There was some good work done on the roof several years ago, but the, the rest of the building has, has suffered by benign neglect, I would say. And it's, this is such an important building in Dobbs Ferry that I, I am very hopeful that we can move forward with this, with this project. I think it's going to be super for the, for the village, both from, from an appearance, in terms of sparking more things happening downtown. Obviously, it'll be financially important for the village and I'm, I'm very pleased to be able to support it.
I think I'll mention that, so early on in the process, there was the statement by the applicant that two levels of parking are not counted as stories, which came as a surprise to me. But apparently it was sort of supported and codified or whatever. So to me, that is a critical thing. The site, as it stands now, is not a, it's not conforming in any way. It's exceeding all the zoning. It's an existing eyesore, frankly, to me. And, you know, as Steve mentioned, the improvement here, this is ownership opportunities, apartments in downtown. You see those in Hastings and in Scarsdale, and I think there's a real shortage of those here. Also, elevator access to units has not been mentioned before. We're going to have 24 accessible units now in this space, which, you know, per code. And the men, the issue about the restoration, I think we wanted to put sort of some teeth into that. And we're going to have a consultant engaged and paid for by the applicant to make sure this is done properly.
Yeah, good, thank you.
I think most of my comments have been covered, but I think the applicant has made a real effort to reduce the massing of the project. It's made a big difference. We're starting with a, with a non-conforming eyesore on Palisades. It's not a nice park right now. You know, we wouldn't be talking about this if that were the case. And I second there, third, the fact the Oceana Building's a really important thing to Dobbs Ferry and we need to get that fixed up.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, so as a person who's going to be the outlier, I wanted to, we had a discussion already, and I just wanted to be very clear about my feelings about the project. Because I support the project. I actually think, and I agree with the assessment of the benefits. I think that we're getting rid of this warehouse. We're providing a lot of parking. There is a historic restoration of the Oceana project. I agree with what's been said, that I think it'd be good to really make sure that that restoration is of the highest quality. And I'm not, I don't know enough about that, but I think we should find a way to get the right kind of language in to make sure that it happens. I'm also hoping that on the affordable housing, that the price point for that housing can somehow be negotiated to be something that is appropriate for kind of workforce housing in Dobbs Ferry. You know, firemen and policemen, affordable housing is usually calculated by law as a percentage of median income in Southern Westchester, which is still a crazy high number. My issue is not, so my issue is not with the project. I think the project is the right project, but as I've expressed to the other members of the board, I'm, I'm uncomfortable about the way we are getting there. I feel like the, the thing that makes the project work for me is that I do think that there's an argument that can be made for the idea that the scale and character of Main Street can turn the corner and continue, and continue around the corner. And if that's the case, then I feel like we should rezone, we should go through whatever the process would be to rezone that corner property, the whole property as DB, as downtown business, which would reduce, the scale of some waivers would still be required, but it would reduce the scale of the waivers. And while materially, on the ground, as Steve was pointing out to me, maybe it wouldn't be any different in the end, I think it would force us, the community, to go through a different kind of discussion about whether or not what's involved in that decision to extend that kind of scale around the corner. So that's.
Thank you. So.
So you'll take a vote on the motion now?
Yes, so, all right. All in favor of the motion? Aye. Opposed? Nay. The motion carries. Thank you all. The next item on our agenda tonight is, I hope will be short. I need to get Mr. Stein-Schneider's attention here. The next item on the agenda, item three, is to discuss the application for site plan review to the Board of Trustees for 100 Main Street. And I'm hoping that we're not going to have a presentation tonight.
Nothing, I'm just, I'm, I'm here to represent the project. We went to the Board of Trustees, we made presentations to them. They became aware, I think Donna actually pointed it out, that what we were showing, the Board of Trustees, had the benefit of the changes that have been made by the Architectural Review Board, which this board had not seen. So the Board of Trustees said, why don't you go back to the planning board and show them the design now that's been modified? I'm not going to opine whether it's a big change or little change, and you guys have done that. And I think it's important because it was a public hearing. I think there's a mechanism that we could have come back and done this administratively as an extension of a vote or something, but given the amount of energy that, with the neighbors and concerns within the community, I only felt comfortable if we did this as a public hearing. So it didn't make any sense to come to make a presentation to you tonight since I think you need to call for the public hearing. I know the Board of Trustees kind of said to do that, but I think this board has to say, we want a public hearing. Tell us, we'll notice it, we'll get all that stuff out, and we'll be here for the next meeting.
Good. I don't know if there's any need for discussion, but I would move that we call for a public hearing on the application for 100 Main Street at our next meeting. Second, all in favor?
Thank you.
Excuse me, the public hearing then will give us the right to speak about the project?
Yes.
Because I'm very concerned about the safety of the people of Hudson Terrace across from the project. No one has addressed that. It's a dead-end street. The only access is from Chestnut Street. There's a loading zone in.
Wait, 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 wait. I think you're talking about 75 Main Street?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that was our first item.
I know, but there was no chance to speak.
Well, yeah, because the public hearing had been closed at our last meeting.
No, we'll be in public hearing at the Board of Trustees.
And then I could express my concern about the safety of Hudson Terrace.
Say whatever you want.
Yes, yeah.
And that's not scheduled yet.
No, no, thank you. We voted, right?
Did we have a vote?
Yes.
Yes, we passed that. Bastard. The last item on our agenda is a pre-submission conference for proposed subdivision, the site plan review for property located at 23 Manor Place.
Good evening. I'm here representing the government, designing, developing. This is a piece of property on Manor Place. Donna, please, is in the back of the room. He is the contractor MD on this. It is a parcel that is just under 16,000 square feet in a zoning district that required is 5,000. It has about 90 feet, a little more than 90 feet of frontage on Manor Place. It has steep slopes.
90?
90 feet.
90.
And we have a steep slopes analysis that's been done by the surveyor. We've tested out, we've got a sketch subdivision plan, which I believe that has been submitted to you, which shows two compliant lots with the rectangle drive within it, demonstrating compliance with the code. We show a speculative house on the lot, that house has been designed. Our tenant, he's been house, made additions to it. It's somewhat of an entertaining situation with a house. It is a house that, I didn't get the count from Ryan, but it's had at least rebuilding permits, none of which have ever been closed out. And it seems that a lot of the work was done without any good inspection, is how I would say that. So part of the goal here is to remedy all that, restore that house, prepare that house, get it to some really good shape, close out all the illegalities with it, do whatever is necessary in terms of testing, make sure that it's properly constructed, and then have an additional lot that would be significantly home. I don't think this will be as exciting a project. It would look to the back of the box off against a circle of land which is, let's just refer to it as a former paper street. There's a travelway that goes between Temple and Luzerne that varies in width. Right now is the driveway access to this property. There's a garage at the lower level of the property that is served by that. I don't know when was the last time anybody drove their car in, but it's right there. The neighbor to the west, perhaps to use that area for their access to the property. The utilities, right now, there's indication that the utilities for the existing house went down, that is a travelway out to Luzerne. So as we've shown plans, the intent is to make use of that and we're investigating what we can do with that. What we're showing right now is the idea that the driveway serving the house, we'll make use of that travelway, we'll get driveway, though, in addition to improvement. And it wouldn't be in the frontage for, for this house. That would be on the other list.
Well, I think, I think an issue is going to be access and the appropriateness of using that piece of land and so on.
Always an issue.
Always an issue.
Yeah.
And I think, I think this is an interesting lot. As you may know, I, I know this area, I used to live up there, I know this area, and I've looked at it recently and confirmed that this is an interesting situation. I think it would be very helpful for the board to do a site visit because you really can't understand it looking at a piece of paper.
Agreed.
It is beyond description and.
I just, can I just, no, I just want to understand again, I didn't think I would know this by now, and I don't. So, so this, for this, for this subdivision to happen, does this have to become a legal street?
No. The, if you look up here at the top, you see the flag, the 25 feet wide, which is in the front right. So that provides you with your legal frontage. Whether or not that is used as the access is a decision that's made basically by this board. It could be done, we think that that would be, you know, a much more complex construction. But of course, if the board said, that's how we want you to come in, you know, that's what the applicant would have to do. The existing house is served by that travelway. That's how they're.
Like this?
Uh, yeah, but not going out towards Luzerne right now, they come in from Temple. So that drives in that way, they come up, there's a road trees there, they come right up to where the garage is. So the goal here is to try and find out what's the best way to make all of that work. And is there a way to use that travelway? Who owns the travelway is a great question. I'm sure Darius, I'm sure he's had it all out by now, but just tell us at some point. I think that's.
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
So that's, I, I think that's going to probably be more, the most. As I first looked at it, I was thinking that it would be more of an issue with some slopes, but we net out close to 6,000 square feet, you know, upper 6,000 square feet of each lot, so we're not tight on any of those things. I think the access landscaping is going to be key here, not only to provide privacy for the neighbors, but also to give a quality and character to the way the house in the back would feel. You really don't want to feel like your house is back behind everyone else in a hole or something. So is there a way of making that come out well? I mean, it's one of the reasons we've looked at that driveway coming out to Luzerne.
I think this will all make a lot more sense and we can have better discussion if we've looked at the property.
Yeah.
Do you want to try to schedule something?
Yeah, I'd like to try to schedule something.
Yeah, with weather forecasts, I think that's what we care about.
It's going to be nice weather for, well, the weekends.
We don't need public hearing to.
No.
Okay.
No, 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 no. Well, I can do it as early as this coming Saturday, the 9th of January, or either day on the following weekend, the 16th or the 17th.
I can do the 16th or the 17th. The, I can do the 16th or the 17th. I prefer not to do this Saturday.
That's that holiday weekend, just.
Oh, Martin Luther.
Just if you're around.
Either the 16th or the 17th is fine.
I'm going to be around.
I'm sorry, 17?
16th or 17th is fine.
16 or 17 for me.
When is the holiday?
Eighteenth.
Monday.
It's actually the 18th, so.
Out here, we've got three saying 16. What do you think?
How about Dennis's appointment? Probably got my phone.
Don't worry, this will be like pulling teeth.
Very good, Rob. Excellent.
What time? What time? I don't know, 9 o'clock?
Sure.
9 o'clock?
On the 16th.
Make it 9:20 or something? I have an 8 o'clock appointment.
Okay, 9:20, 9:30.
9:30.
Is that good enough for you, out here, or are you going to have a pull-out team?
It'll work.
9:30 works?
Yeah.
Ryan, if we could get that noticed?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, for those that are here in the audience that are interested in this, we are, we are going to have a site visit, which means we come to the site and walk around and then try to understand it and so on. On the sixteenth, Saturday the sixteenth at nine thirty, the way a site visit works, we come, the, the applicant talks to us, we ask, we ask questions of him. We, we ask that those with us do not, are not participating in the discussion. You can listen to it, but not participate in it, please. So we would look forward to, I suspect, seeing many of you that day.
Mr. Chairman, a great number of us came out tonight from the neighborhood. We have no intention to really speak tonight. I would like to just say two words. If I could just ask those that came out in opposition to this, just stand for a second. All right. Anyone needs to, thank you. I would ask you, I could just indulge you for just a few moments.
Use the light.
Yes, this is, this is not yet a public hearing and if we can, if we can, no, if we can agree that you are the only person speaking tonight, that would be helpful.
Absolutely, sir, yes. And I thank you for indulging me on this. I just have a couple of things to say.
Do you hear me?
That was the first thing that was going. Introduction. I'm Steve Sudak. I'm at twenty-three Highland Avenue. My property abuts the subject property, the rear of my property for about fifteen to twenty feet, the balance of my twenty-five foot line, abuts the property of Kevin Levin, who is above me as well. Beside me is Sweeney Rothstein. This property abuts the subject property, at least it's twenty-five feet. And then Gaffner's property abuts the subject property for the balance and then runs all the way out to Temple. All of these abutting lines that I described are described as in line of the central line of the former, the de-mapped street. There is no right-of-way. There is no, what was this very creative word we used today? The traveled way. There's no traveled way. There's no street, there's no right-of-way. Board of Trustees, de-mapped the streets. You indulge me for a moment, I'll read sections of the de-mapping. On a motion made by trustee Luthlander and seconded by trustee Canet, the following resolution was adopted. Whereas a proposal was duly made by this board to adopt certain changes on the official map of the Village of Dobbs Ferry. Specifically, a proposal was made pursuant to New York Village law to de-map and discontinue certain paper streets on the official map of the Village. Whereas this board held a public hearing, whereas the public hearing was open, whereas the public, the board received no comments, the public closed the public hearing and in accordance with Dobbs Ferry Village law, referred the match to the Village Planning Board, that is your board. Whereas on or about September first, two thousand and five, the Planning Board passed a resolution recommending that certain enumerated paper streets in the Village be de-mapped and discontinued, citing inherent difficulties associated with the development of paper streets in the Village, including potential severe community impacts and quality of life concerns, planning issues in the Village, and the fact that paper streets in the Village were drawn on the official map for tax assessment purposes of real estate lots prior to the Village's zoning and planning ordinances. Whereas in September resolution, the Planning Board also found that paper streets were identified and drawn on the official map without adequate concern for reasonable development along these roads. Whereas it is the opinion of this board that de-mapping and discontinuing of certain enumerated paper streets in the Village will have no adverse impact on the environment and it will in fact have a positive impact. Now therefore be resolved that the de-mapping and discontinuance of paper streets is a type-two action under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act and will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment. Be it further resolved that the board, in accordance with Village law, and furthermore the recognition of the Planning Board hereby de-maps and discontinues the following paper streets identified on the official map of the Village. They list twenty, thirty-seven streets, whatever it is, one of them being Temple Road Extension to the southeast, the very one that we are speaking of. Secondly, I'd like to read from, oh, well, you heard a statement tonight, a very vague statement about the fact that there don't seem to be any utilities in the street. I have a copy of the Village sewer map, which I could show you. You'll have trouble with this, I'm not going to help you with it. That's up to you for even finding the subject street because in fact, the de-mapped street doesn't even occur on this map, nor do any utilities. Nor do any utilities. There is no sewer on that street, there's no gas on that street, there is no water, there is no electric. Period. Not question, not me, there isn't. And that's something you wouldn't see if you walked through. You'd be standing on it going, maybe there's something here. There's not. I say that with great authority. I now want to read from the vision plan. I'm sure all of you on the planning board are familiar with the vision plan. Mr. Chairman, do you know which neighborhood is in the vision plan?
I don't remember.
Don't remember? It's time to remember. This is the Knoll. I'm going to read from the vision plan. The vision for the Knoll, and for those interested, let me just say, the Knoll actually is bounded maybe a little left by Fergie Avenue, generally down to Fergie, down to Ashford, over to west of Summit Terrace, up in the jury state. It's the area where this property is located. The vision for the Knoll, preserve the Knoll neighborhood as an attractive private place to live. The features and opportunities of the Knoll, it's the top of the hill, the predominance of older houses and mature trees, modest scale houses on shady, lightly traveled streets, neighborhood backs to the jury state, the Village Home Preserve. Here are the concerns for the Knoll. Until recently, mapped paper streets have led to outscale infill development on wooded, topographically challenging terrain widely used and enjoyed as open space and create continuing pressures for such development, which threatens to dramatically alter the character of the neighborhood. As the jury neighborhood, as in the jury neighborhood, some local residents have been resistant to through traffic going to the jury state, effectively cutting it off from the rest of the community. Here are the recommendations for the Knoll neighborhood. Provide street end entries into the jury state with a handful of parking spaces and bicycle amenities, but modest signage so that these entry points remain understated to be, to avoid unnecessary disturbing nearby residents. Same recommendations for the jury neighborhood, so as not burden one neighborhood. Take whatever steps are necessary to ensure that the formerly mapped paper streets remain off limits to development and create a conservation district to protect the character of the homes within the woodland, landscape, and hilly terrain. Returning to the first point, there is no street. The way the deeds read are, and I have a copy of all of the deeds, every deed in New York State reads the same way. I've spoken to three attorneys on this matter. I don't come in and give you tacit, maybe, possibly, all deeds read this way. They talk about the parcel from the subdivision where, or the, from the original subdivision from eighteen hundred where the, where the property sits. And then there are clauses, or there are, they go on. And they say, together with all the rights, title and interest, if any, of the party of the first part in and to any streets and roads abutting the above the described premises to the central lines thereof. That does not mean that when you de-map the street, the line suddenly appears. That means those lines exist now today. Technically, I have jurisdiction over Highland Avenue, but obviously it is a mapped public street. This is a de-mapped street. I also have jurisdiction over it, as does everyone else. So this ridiculous driveway coming in is actually passing over at least three private properties. I will go on the record and say that the demolition plan you are holding is based on a survey, a new York State licensed surveyor. He needs to tell you the truth. And what his says is de-mapped street. It is in fact a de-mapped street. This is a completely bogus plan. It is there to befuddle you and this walkthrough is there to befuddle you as well, because you'll be walking, thinking I'm walking on a street. You are not walking on a street, you're walking on private property. I was strongly advised that your walkthrough, you might get clearance from those people who own that property. You do not have a deed to that property. All of the abutting properties do. It's rather simple. That survey also shows the demolition plan, trees marked for removal. Those trees, some of them are on private property. I strongly advise the Village not to give tree permits to remove those trees as if they were removed on my property, I will call the police, I will press charges. I'm sure the Village is not going to do that, so, fine. But sometimes trees disappear mysteriously in the middle of the night or over a long weekend. Sometimes, and then it's like the lats out of the way now because now that everybody that's, the tree huggers don't have to worry about the trees anymore. If that happens, we trace this back to that plan that you're looking at right now, that's giving them direction to take those trees down. I would strongly advise that you reject these plans for everyone's benefit. That's all.
Thank you.
I just have one, I just have one question. Do we know who, who actually owns, like when a street is de-mapped, what becomes of that former right-of-way?
That's a loaded question.
Yeah.
Okay. Have you stopped beating your wife?
I'll.
We don't have to get into it now.
Yeah, I don't need to get into it. I'm not going to get into it. If that's okay.
Yeah.
It's asked and answered.
It's definitely a deed. It's definitely a deed.
Well, this is very early in the process. We gave Mr. Sudak the courtesy of making a statement tonight. There'll be a public hearing if we get that far in the process at some point, but, and then any of you can make statements. But let's take it step by step and the first step will be meeting all of you on Saturday the sixteenth at nine thirty. Thank you.
Sounds good. generous, maybe we have to close the meeting? Is that the last?
Yeah, I make the motion to close the meeting. You have a favorite vibe.
Wow. Boom. That's a record.